Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first TCAN Virtual Town Meeting. I'm David LaValle, Executive Director. Thanks for joining us. This is the first time we've had a chance to really connect with you since our annual meeting back in June. And so we're happy to give you an update on where things are at TCAN as of now. We have a few special guests who are going to be joining me tonight. Happy to welcome from the group Les Zeppelin. Steph Paines, bandleader and lead guitarist, is going to be joining us for an interview. Also, the Vice President of the National Independent Venue Association, Stephen Chilton, is going to be joining us. And then finally, we're going to have a panel discussion with two members of the TCAN staff, Erin Basile, our Director of Programming, and Nicola Anderson, our Cinema Programs Director. So it's going to be a great show. Thanks for joining us. Let's get started. Okay, so if you live in Massachusetts, you probably know by now that we're in Phase Three of the reopening here in Massachusetts due to COVID-19. We're actually still in Phase One, or Part One of Phase Three, which basically means we're still closed. TCAN is not able to present live music programs indoors of any kind. So at this point, we are still in suspended animation. We were hoping that by now, the rate of infection would have been reduced to the point where we could move to Phase Two, Part Two of Phase Three. But unfortunately, we're not there. And actually, I think Part Two of Phase Three is postponed indefinitely. So the bad news there is that we are continuing to reschedule programs and push things out to either further in the year, and in many cases, out to 2021. Up to this point, we've rescheduled over 100 events that we had scheduled, including about 40 main stage music programs and comedy, as well as over 60 movie screenings. So it's been a challenge, but we are still here. We're surviving. But we've had to make some changes in order to cope with this suspension of all programs. And so as a result, we've really cut the expenses down to just the essential expenses. Unfortunately, at the end of August, we had to reduce our payroll, which resulted in furloughing some employees, as well as a reduction of work hours for many employees. So as painful as this is, we're doing our best to stay alive and to continue to engage with you, our patrons. And so we're making the best of a bad situation. The only reason that we are still here, and this is six months now into it, since March 13th, when we closed, is the generosity of our donors and members. It's like Scarlett O'Hara has always depended on the kindness of strangers. Well, these donors and members are no strangers. They have come to our aid and supported us with about $260,000 worth of donations, sponsorships, grants of all kinds, memberships, to help us get through this extremely difficult period. You know, in that period, about 595 of you either joined as members or renewed your membership, which was just amazing. And in addition to that, received about 400 individual donations and grants from organizations ranging from Middlesex Savings Bank Charitable Foundation to the Foundation for Metro West. So it's to that that we attribute our survival to this point. So keep it coming. It's desperately needed, and it's the only reason we're here. You know, that funding that came in, which ends up to be about $43,000 a month, was used for building maintenance, insurance payments, salaries, loan payments, maintaining our ticketing system, website. So just to maintain a presence, you know, it takes that much to keep us going. So in light of that, we welcome your support and truly appreciate it. I also want to let you know that on the bright side is that movie screenings were able to resume in the summer. And so we are able to present films to audiences with a restricted capacity of 25 patrons. We can't have more than 25 people in the building. But a surprising number of people have come out for those movie screenings. We've shown everything from films of Alfred Hitchcock to Harry Potter films, some really interesting documentaries, and we'll be hearing more about that later on in the program in the panel discussion. Live music is still suspended. And, you know, we are holding on to all the dates that we had scheduled originally for the fall. But when we hear from a booking agency or from an artist that they wish to reschedule that, we are accommodating that reschedule and pushing it out to a date later on in the year or next year. We'll continue to do that. And so, you know, the prospects for us presenting live music in 2020, you know, remain entirely up to the state and to how well we're able to defeat this COVID-19 virus. So we remain hopeful, but at this point, we're being realistic that, you know, the closer we get to the end of the year, the more likely it is that events, even if they haven't been formally rescheduled yet, events that are scheduled in 2020, will very likely move into 2021, when those artists will be very excited to finally make good on their promise to come here. So with that, we're going to share some more additional information with you during the course of the meeting, but at least that gives you some starting point as to how TCAN is doing. So with that, we're excited to get into our first interview, which I recorded previously, with Steph Paines of Les Zeppelin. Okay, my first interview tonight is with a bandleader and lead guitarist for the band Les Zeppelin. She's been at TCAN many times. They've traveled all around the world. She's a driving force. It's great to have her with us tonight. Would you please welcome Steph Paines? Hi, Steph.
David, and it's so good to see you.
Hey, here.
We've been doing this a long time. Not quite this, but we've been working together a long time.
Yeah, it's great. It's great to have you. Well, the big question I'm dying to know is what have Les Zeppelin and you been doing for the last six months in this crazy situation?
Yeah, well, gosh, the beginning was really rough, you know? We played our last gig March 12th. We didn't know where we were going to, when we would work again, how we were going to work again, if we would work again. This, you know, Les Zeppelin is basically my income, so it's my main job. So basically, I was out of work, you know? And I think like so many musicians and probably, you know, so many promoters and everyone in the business, it just became bleaker and bleaker as we all went on.
Two or three months into this, we felt, you know, by the summer, you know, maybe we'll turn a corner. And then it was July, and then it was August. And so in terms of the band, now looking at the rest of the year, what are your tour plans? How are you looking at accepting gigs for the remainder of the year? What are you guys thinking?
Right, well, that's exactly right. I mean, we would have been in Natick by now, right?
Absolutely.
Our usual.
No doubt.
What I can say is thank goodness you were brilliant and had us twice. Remember last year? See?
That was the finale of last year, so it was a delight.
Thank goodness, because we sort of got our Natick, you know, a little bit more of you guys. David, we actually played last weekend. We flew to Colorado, we played a gig, and we flew back, like, you know, within 24 hours. And that's the first we've played since March. But, you know, in Colorado, they're not on the quarantine list, and the girls felt okay with flying, you know? I mean, you know, it was not only can we play, but is everyone willing to do it?
You know, I think of you as, and you are the driving force, you're the bandleader, you're the ones who, one who is really, you know, cracking the whip and making sure that people are kind of doing the, putting in the time to make the band as great as it is. I'm, you know, bands got to rehearse to stay connected. I guess I'm wondering, how are you guys staying connected, you know, spiritually as well as musically and doing the work?
We rehearsed for the first times last week, and we hadn't been together in almost six months. And quite frankly, I was wondering if we could still play. I mean, you know, the first rehearsal was terrible. I will tell you, it was really, you know, because we were just so, how does this go? And, you know, the other thing that happens too is that some people play a lot, and some people have not picked up the guitar at all or the bass at all. And certainly, if you're a drummer, what are you going to do? Where are you going to go and play the drums, you know? So it's either one or the other, I have found. But playing together, no.
Well, thinking about that, I mean, not from the audience's perspective, but from yours, what's it going to take to make you feel comfortable touring again?
We are much more comfortable with the idea now, and that I can see us being comfortable with touring if the gigs are there. I think we know how to take precaution, and I believe that the herd immunity will kick in at some point. I mean, you know, I have faith that it will be okay at some point. I'm not sure how soon, but I think it's going to be. I just think that the bigger problem is, will people feel safe coming to shows? Because if they don't, or if you have to open your venue and you have to leave three seats between everybody, you know, that's a question for you. What are you going to do with that? And how can you pay the bands? How can you survive? So it's really a circular problem. So it's not only us, but it's the sort of, it's an industry question. How are we going to deal with now this possibility that you may only be able to sell a third of the tickets that you could before?
Yeah.
And if that's true, you're not going to pay, you know, we can't charge you what we charge you. I mean, we're dealing all with, you know, places selling out and guarantees and versus deals and stuff like that. So I think it's a larger issue. I, you know, I think people have been talking about streaming concerts and charging for that and all of that. I mean, I don't know what you think about that. Do you think that could garner the same kind of revenue as opening a venue? Is it the same as watching a live band?
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm, I, you know, we are talking a lot about live streams and thinking that at least while we can't do a live performance on our stage, if we can deliver a, some kind of interesting, you know, engaging video that captures the essence of a live performance, people miss that. People tell us all the time how much they really miss that.
Right.
What is your thought? I mean, I don't think live streams are going to replace the live music experience. I really don't. But I think, you know, what is your thought about it?
I have a feeling that something that might happen is that it'll be a combination of things. I mean, possibly venues will open at first, and they will be limited in their audience capacity. But at the same time, if you were to say set up a live stream capability at, you know, TCAN, maybe there is a whole other audience that could tune in for a lot less money, but they would still pay something to tune in to basically get the live performance. And it might be a sort of coordinated effort. Now, you know, something like that, if to be positive, could work, at least to start. It certainly could work, where someone could play, pay, you know, a nominal fee, and they get to stream the concert, and then other people who want to really be there, it's a different situation. Um, that might be an idea. I think streaming is one thing. At least you have it in the moment. Is it the same viscerally? No.
No. Particularly with a band like Les Zeppelin, that is so intense, you know, in person. But I think, you know, I think that there's a lot of room for improvement in the technology. I mean, a lot of the lives, artists' live streams that I've seen, you know, the artist is doing it from their bedroom with the phone, and you can barely see them in the dark, and they're wondering if the microphone is even working. So it's, there's definitely room to do it better than we're experimenting with now. But I do, you know, I think it's a good possibility. You know, you alluded to the other side of this same question, which is, you know, the whole idea of when fans will be ready to come back? Because it's one thing if bands want to do it, and promoters or presenters want to do it, but when will audiences, in your view, be ready to come back into a room of people and enjoy a live music experience?
I do think people really, really want to. If this Colorado show that was, we just did, is any indication, some people are not frightened at all. I mean, I mean, if there's, look, if there's, if it's an outdoor venue, I think that the odds are probably better, that people will feel more comfortable. If they're coming inside, that we haven't experienced yet, so I don't know.
I think your band is fortunate to play a wide range of venues. You play really small clubs, but then you play these outdoor places. I've seen you at World Cafe Live in Philly, bigger room. Between those larger venues and the smaller venues, I think we're dealing with it in different ways.
Right.
Who do you think has the best shot to come back in terms of recovery?
Gosh, I think that venues need the support of their clientele, you know? I just think it's really important. It's like, you know, there's a whole Save Our Stages movement going on, because people love these, you know, it's one thing to have big festivals, and we've played giant festivals, and we've played outdoor shows, and everything in between. But the intimate gig, you know, like you get at Natick, or like you get at these lovely theaters where people can really take in the group, they're so important, and people love those shows. But I do think that what has to happen is that, you know, we're all going to have to figure out a way to keep venues like this going through this until we can have a solution, a vaccine, whatever it is where people start to feel comfortable. And I think that will happen at some point. But in the meantime, you know, possibly a mixture of live stream and having some people in attendance could be a way to go, or some other, and we have to be creative with it.
Well, thinking about the experience I've had in this, in this room, watching your band, that's what's keeping me going. It's thinking about those experiences and one of, and I know how important those memories are to everyone who's seen you. So here's hoping that we make it to the other side, and maybe if we think creatively, maybe there's something we can do together in the meantime.
There are ways we can try to be positive and find new approaches. And maybe that's a really good thing. Maybe we'll come up with stuff that's even better on the other side. So that's what I hope. But we have to keep each other, you know, stoked. I think we can do it, though.
I'm right there with you.
Not that this long, we can keep going.
Yeah. Thanks so much for doing this, Steph. I really appreciate it. It is so good to, and so good to see you again.
And you too, David.
Okay. Good.
Till next time.
Okay. Okay, here's our panel. She's a longtime stage manager and theater person, whose credits include The Oprah Winfrey Show and theaters from Chicago to Boston. Now she's our very own Director of Programming here at TCAN. Erin Basile is with us tonight.
Hi, David.
And also, after studying media arts at the University of London, she spent the last 15 years in the film industry in locations across Europe and Australia before joining us at TCAN as our Cinema Programs Director in 2016. Nicola Anderson is with us tonight.
Hi, guys.
Well, guys, I've just had a pretty sobering conversation with Steph Paines of Les Zeppelin, who's been completely out of work for the last six months. The two of you are really on the front lines of all of our programming. You manage 100% of all of our programming. Erin, you're overseeing the community programs, children's programs, TCAN players, as well as all the bookings for our national and local touring artists. And Nick, you're doing all the movies, booking all of our films. I think TCAN presented something like 130 movies of, we had something like 130 movie screenings last year. It's been about six months now since COVID-19 shut all of that down. So tell me, what's been the impact of the shutdown to TCAN?
Wow. I mean, the impact of the shutdown is that for a period of time, we weren't able to do anything in the building at all. The staff has been working from home. I actually returned from maternity leave, but was never able to return to the building, which was a very strange way to come back to work. And we've, we've been doing our best to stay engaged with each other and engaged with our community, but it has been a huge impact on TCAN to be shut down for six months.
So just thinking about the live music side, how many people, how many events did we do last year in that same time period versus this year?
In the same time period, we, we do about eight events a month regularly. So over six months, we, I don't have the exact number of events. I can tell you how many people came, but I would say it would be between 24 and 27 events in that time period. We had 9,000 people through the door in that time period in 2019. Since we shut down on March 13th of this year, we have had zero people through the door for live music.
Wow. And I know that in that same time period, we also canceled the TCAN Players productions. There was no way that they could present or rehearse those shows as well. So Nicola, how's it, what about on the movie side?
Um, yeah, I mean, the same, the same as Erin. I mean, we're lucky enough that we have tentatively been able to sort of slowly open up a little bit in the cinema side of things. But if we're looking at the same kind of comparison, 2019, I'd say we probably had roughly 60, 70 screenings with probably about 1,600 people through the door. And in the same, the sort of pandemic time period, this year, we maybe have had 120 people come in. We've actually been able to program slightly more films, because we have obviously more calendar space. But we have had a vast, vast reduction in the number of people through, and obviously the amount of revenue that we're making. So, yeah, it's been tough. We also have obviously the reduced availability of content. The studios are holding all their cards close to their chest. They're trying to keep themselves afloat, and they're not releasing the titles anywhere near what they would be, neither are the independent distributors. So it's been a really difficult time, really difficult.
You know, I know that the booking process for live music as well as for film happens months in advance before the actual concert or the movie screening. I'm wondering about all the events that were scheduled in this time period. Erin, on the, on the live music scene, I know you've, you had a number of shows confirmed. What happened to all those concerts?
What's happened to those concerts is that they are being pushed out and pushed out. We absolutely plan on fulfilling those dates in the future when it's safe and responsible to do so. I've been working with agents for months now, finding new homes for tours. It's really hard. They are trying to reschedule not just our date, but every date that went with our date on that tour. So that we're not talking about one or two dates, we're talking about 10 or 12, and trying to find places within the calendar that accommodate not just our performance, but everything that made that routing work. Most of the national acts we work with actually plan an entire tour around a few anchor dates, where they're able to maybe get a bigger room full, a higher guarantee, and then the rest of us are able to fill in. And that's how, that's part of how we get some of the really high-quality, big national touring acts, we're able to get into our little intimate room. But moving all of that and making all of that happen again at an unknown time is a huge challenge, not just for us as the presenter, but for the agencies and managers who are working to make it all fit together again.
So all those people who bought tickets in advance, didn't they all want their money back?
Amazingly, no. I'm so grateful for our patrons. They have been willing to ride with us while we figure out what's going on. They have been willing to donate their tickets back to us if they don't think they can make the new date. Many of them have held on to those tickets in the hopes of being able to see the show when it does come to fruition. I am overwhelmed by the generosity of our patrons, though. We've only had to outright cancel one show so far, which is amazing. It's fantastic. And it's because the artist doesn't plan on touring again when this is all over.
So, so Nick, I know that the movie business operates in a completely different way than putting a national tour, a live tour, together. But I'm seeing that there aren't a whole lot of new movies coming out. So how does, how did that whole thing, how does, how has the COVID-19 pandemic affected the release of new films and the availability of films?
At the moment, there is no big theatrical success, and studios are pulling back and pulling back and rescheduling and rescheduling, and then suddenly pulling titles. I mean, on the plus side for us, we have a much more diverse repertoire of films that we will program. We have a lot of independent films and a lot of documentaries, and some of the smaller independent distributors have still gone ahead and released new release documentaries of some real substance that we have been able to screen. And we had, you know, maybe 50% of our 20% attendance come, and everybody really enjoyed those films. So that was, that was heartwarming. It was great that they came back, and it was really good that we got such a good feedback. But realistically, the studios are looking much more to the VOD, the Video On Demand model, for their releases, and also the independents. It's the only way they will be able to make their money back. And it's, yeah, it's the only, only thing that makes sense for them at the moment. It's just not enough people able to go and watch films.
So I think I read that over 1,000 independent music venues and small movie theaters across the country were in danger of closing permanently due to the pandemic. What has TCAN been doing to stay engaged with our patrons for the last six months?
I mean, from a cinema perspective, the movie side of things, we obviously have had the period where we had to go March to July, July the 13th, we were able to reopen. During that time, we was all, we were all just a bit shocked, I think, the studios, the independents, us, we just didn't know what to do. And then very, very quickly, the, a small group of independent distributors came together and created something called the Virtual Cinema Model. And I am so thankful for them to do, for doing this. It was a way of supporting both their content and also us, a small independent cinema. And anybody can really sign up to it. A lot of the local independent cinemas signed up to it. And basically, it's a 50/50 split between the distributor and the exhibitor, and they put their content up onto this virtual platform. You have a designated sort of TCAN unique sign, a lead-in to the virtual cinema area that's yours. You go in, you rent the film, you pay around the same that you would to go and actually see a film. And while, of course, it's no comparison to going into a cinema, seeing and experiencing a film in our lovely 7.1 Surround Audio Firehouse Cinema, it is a really good way to still keep engaged with an audience, make sure we still give them a great offering of content. And it was, it was a lifesaver. It really was. They could rent the films for anything from three to five days, and we had some wonderful films, and we still have some wonderful films. We're still running that platform alongside the screenings that we're now able to do live. And I think people are really grateful that they have just that other way of still being able to see some really good films.
So I think the counterpart on that, it seems like everything's online now, right? So we're also, the music business, I see artists doing concerts from their living rooms, from their kitchens, from their bedrooms, using an iPhone. The same thing is happening in music, right? Is that the new normal, Erin? Is that the new normal, Erin?
To a large degree, yes. Musicians are dying to play, so they're finding the ways that they can. And most of those ways involve an iPhone and their living room. There's a whole new little niche market around living room concerts. And we found our little way into it by partnering with some of the musicians who we've worked with regularly to sort of co-host those living room concerts. And we've done so on a donation-based model, where we help to market their stream, and then we also broadcast it on our YouTube channel. We've done these with Grace Kelly and John Fousset Dart and Matt Nikoa. We had Mary Fall with us, Jake Armardang. It's been wonderful. It's not the same, but it has been wonderful. And we take donations and split them 50/50 with the artist.
So a tough, tough way to, you know, stay open with just that kind of programming. So, you know, thinking in July, Nicola alluded to it. The infection rates started to come down to the point where the state opened up movie screenings for, you know, 25 or fewer people in the building. So I'm wondering, Nick, what did this mean in terms of the movie theaters in Massachusetts, and specifically for TCAN, including the precautions that we had to take?
I think, so, yeah, Governor Baker, I think, on July the 6th, said that Phase Three Part One was to happen, and it was that we could open to 20% of our capacity for 25 people. And I think a lot of cinemas looked at the buildings, looked at their ventilation systems, looked at where they were. And a lot of the Massachusetts movie theaters, certainly the independent movie theaters are very old. They have very old ductwork. And a lot actually sadly chose not to open. We were very lucky that we obviously have this wonderful new installation. We've had a renovation recently, and because of that, we could actually upgrade our air to the point where it was very, very efficient. We had all the fancy new Merv 13 filters put in. We have put such a huge commitment to making sure that we make our space safe for people coming in. It was a lot of work. It took months of planning. Our operations manager, Josh, was sort of liaising with what the CDC was saying, what the state was saying, making sure we adhered to all the guidelines, had people in for training, and we chose to open. We could have gone ahead on July the 6th, but we kept, we decided against that. And we had an extra week to bring more people in for training, ensure full efficiency, and allow everybody to be 100% secure and safe. And no, not only that we were helping our patrons and making sure they were safe, but of course, our staff, our volunteers, they had to know that they were safe coming back. It was so important to us. But it was really important for us to reopen. We needed to reopen. We needed to start seeing people again and letting people come in and see content. So our website has a really good list of the full specs and the full protocols, but we are doing absolutely everything we can to ensure everybody's safety.
So movie theaters and restaurants now have been able to cautiously reopen with limited capacity, but not so for live music and theater. Erin, why is it so much more dangerous to present live theater and live music than go out to eat at a restaurant or see a movie?
A lot has to do with the activity that's going on. So I know we've all heard about aerosols as a factor in contributing to the spread of COVID-19. In both of those instances, both theatrical performances and concerts, there's a lot of singing and speaking and projecting and really putting it out there. And that is a way in which these performances can be riskier just by what they are.
Well, it sounds like it's going to take a while before live music comes back. It could be more than a few months before artists and audiences are ready to come back. Certainly, bigger venues like Tita Garden and the Wilbur Theater and Great Woods aren't going to be coming back anytime soon. So what are the smaller venues like TCAN going to do in the meantime?
We're not ruling anything out. But now, we've recently worked out a new line of programming for the venue called Live from TCAN. We are able to have musicians come to our venue, be on our stage, use our equipment, and perform to an empty room. We have the folks from Natick Pegasus helping us out with equipment and some wonderful people, Beth Chambers and Jim Fleese over at Clever Mountain Productions, who are producing and directing it for us. And we are putting together our highest-quality live music experience to send out online to our patrons every week. We are doing these every Saturday night. We hope to be able to increase this as we move forward, and we've done three of them so far. They look and sound fantastic. I am so excited by the quality of what we're getting doing these Live from TCAN events.
Well, I want to talk about the audience at this point. You know, we have about 2,000 active and contributing members who historically have come to multiple events every year. And in the course of the year, we have about 30,000 people who attend movie screenings or concerts or events of some kind. What are you guys hearing from the community? Are they ready to come back to performances or movie screenings, Nick?
Certainly, a few people are ready to come back to movie screenings. I think the people, I'd like to say a big thank you to the people that are coming back and coming back and coming back. We have such a great patron base. We have such commitment from our patrons, and we are getting nothing but positive feedback. They are going, coming out and saying to me, what can I do? How can I get more people to come? Who should I tell? Where should I be posting about this? And it's all based on people's own personal comfort levels, and we are totally respectful of that, and we completely understand that. We just have to make sure that when people are ready to come back, we are doing everything we can to ensure that they're comfortable to do so.
We're watching what everybody in the government is telling us, what we're hearing from the CDC, and we are planning on how to execute those guidelines at a time when it's appropriate to do so. In the meantime, we're available for smaller events, where the movie theater is open, and it's been amazing to see those folks come back. We're also available to rent the cinema, if you would like. We have several rental periods available each week, and you could have just your family with you. You could have a small group of friends. You could have the people you're podding with. And that's another way that you can come and experience TCAN. We're also still, I'm still showing the venue for rentals. We have something coming up in October, and I'm showing things for next year and the year after that. It's a hard time to wrap your brain around, but things are moving forward. We are moving forward.
You know, I know both of you happen to be moms with young kids at home. For years, that's been a really big part of what TCAN is all about. We presented theater workshops for kids, summer programs, concerts and children's theater, all family movies. I'm sure kids hate being cooped up in the houses, you know, just as much as grownups do. What's TCAN doing for children's programming right now? What does the future look like for those programs?
We did have to suspend our in-person theater programs this summer, but we were able, with the help of our program director, Kristi Pace, to launch a virtual Pocketful of Tales program. And it was very successful. The kids loved it, the parents loved it. It's amazing what they can do over Zoom, as I'm sure any parent out there watching is very familiar with at this point. And we've continued them. So we ran these virtual education programs all through the summer, and we are continuing them into the fall. Kristi will be teaching a series of classes on Saturdays and Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So for any parents out there who are looking for something for their kids to do after school, we've got you. As far as community theater and family programming goes, those things won't be able to come back until we're able to come back more fully. The moment that we're able to do that, we will be doing so.
So I know that some of the movie offerings have been, you know, directed at young people. We have the entire Harry Potter series scheduled, Nick. Do you see more of that kind of thing in the future?
Yeah, I mean, we were really, so there have been some positives to come out of COVID. And thank you so much to the town of Natick. We're actually now able to screen movies to small audiences during the daytime, which is wonderful, because we've got all of the Harry Potter series. We're now going to do, finish that sort of fantasy series up with the Fantastic Beasts films, too. And that's what we've been screening during the week in the mornings and also on Saturday mornings. And we've had children come in. I have brought my children in. They love Harry Potter. They loved seeing it in the cinema. They'd never had the opportunity to see it on the big screen. And to watch them in the cinema, looking for things around the back of them as all the special effects whiz around the cinema room, it was just priceless. So we've had a great, we've had great support. We haven't had huge audiences again, obviously, but we have had people coming back and bringing their children. And moving forward, I really feel like people are rooting for us. People are really wanting to support us, and we are committed to continuing a kid's series in the movie theater. We are hoping maybe we could do some kind of babes-in-arm screenings during the days for any of those nursing moms out there that need to get out of the house and don't mind if other babies are in the screening room screaming around them. That kind of thing would be wonderful to add to our programs. And that's what we're going to be looking into moving forward, certainly.
This pandemic has affected everyone and just every industry. But I'm hard-pressed to, I'm biased, of course, but I'm hard-pressed to think of any industry that's been as negatively impacted as the arts. You know, it's got to be in the top three of those industries that are in most trouble. We're, you know, we were among the first to close and will be among the last to open. And just speaking for myself, I can't imagine a world without Broadway shows. I can't imagine a world without movie theaters and live music and all the rest. What can people do to make sure that arts organizations survive this thing?
Well, you can write to your senators. There's a bill in front of Congress to help promote funding for both an extended pandemic unemployment package as well as funding for arts organizations throughout the country. It's called the Save Our Stages movement, and it's being headed or pushed by a group called NEVA, the National Independent Venue Association. And right now, it needs your support. They make it very easy. You can log onto their website. They have a form email. You just fill it out, and it sends it off to the appropriate senator. So that's one thing you can do. You can write to your senators. And another thing you can do is not forget that we're here. Keep looking at what we're trying to do for you, what we're putting out into the world, because we are putting things out into the world. We want to stay connected.
And so we obviously rely heavily on our members. They are our lifeblood. They keep us running, and they have been wonderful. We had a huge outpouring of support and people renewing memberships and joining memberships for the first time. We had, during the month of May, we had a May membership match. And we had a very, very generous donor who gave us $10,000 and was matching all the memberships that month. So we had a huge search. Inevitably, that has fallen off a little bit. So donations, memberships are critical to keeping us running and help us to ensure that we're here to get you out of that COVID cloud once this, hopefully soon, is over and ensure that we can still have live events and cinema screenings for you to watch and enjoy. We're such an integral part of this community. I'm still recently moved to Natick. I've only been here for four years, and you guys were one of the first places I came. And I was just so amazed and honored to have you in my town, in Natick. I think it's such an important part of the community, and we are very grateful for the wonderful sponsors. People can still sponsor the Live from TCAN series. It's such a great, new, innovative way of presenting live entertainment, and I think it's a great opportunity for sponsorships to sponsor a whole evening from TCAN on the stage. And just, yeah, keep doing what they're doing and tell everyone about us and get more businesses involved and bring more donors to the table, and let's just keep going.
Okay, there is hope. There is hope. Well, I truly appreciate this. Thank you for spending the time with us, Erin Vasile, Nicola Anderson. Thanks so much, guys.
Thanks, David.
Okay, he is the vice president of a new coalition fighting to save the live music business in America by securing federal COVID-19 relief. They're called the National Independent Venue Association, better known in music circles as NEVA. I think it's pronounced NEVA. He owns and operates his own music venue out of Phoenix, Arizona, so he knows this space. Stephen Chilton is here with us tonight. Thanks for joining us, Stephen.
Thanks for having me.
Well, it's not too hard to imagine that a lot of live music venues like TCAN are struggling, and many won't survive this pandemic. What's happening out there from your perspective? What's your outlook for the business?
We all closed in March. It's the same thing all across the country. And even while lots of other industries are, you know, kind of, what restaurants or bars or other things in different cities, and live events is the same everywhere. It's not coming back soon. I don't think we're going to see concerts until, you know, at least at any sort of scale, until well into next year. And so we've still got to be able to figure out, how does everyone make it into next year? We'll probably end up, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to say we'll probably end up going a year, this full year, without mass concerts again. And that is just a long time for any business to go with no revenue.
Who is really affected by all of this closure of the music business?
I mean, it's absolutely everybody. I mean, there is no one who is not affected, from the employees to the artists to all the businesses that are around us. You know, it's management companies and agents. I mean, the entire ecosystem is down.
This whole idea of Save Our Stages has gotten a lot of attention. It's been in Rolling Stone, consortiums that I belong to. It's been a big topic of conversation. Maybe you could tell us a little bit more about what Save Our Stages is all about?
If you remember back to the end of March, beginning of April, no one was really talking about our industry at all. It was not at the center of attention. Everyone was talking about restaurants. Everyone was talking about lots of other industries. Everyone was talking about the R-lines. And no one was talking about events. And our thought was, we were the first to close. We're going to be the last to open, and no one is talking about us. And most of the few articles that were about events and, you know, mass events were, oh, the NBA, they'll be fine. The NFL, they'll cancel some games and they'll be fine. Don't worry about the NBA. And then it was, don't worry about Coachella. Don't worry about Lollapalooza. They'll be back next year. And we're like, well, we won't. We might not be. And so that was an impetus of just trying to change the conversation. And we came up with, a small group of our marketing committee came up with a hashtag and started driving. We wanted something just super simple. We didn't have legislation at that point. You know, there was no legislation at that point. It was just, you know, just trying to get Congress to pay attention and know that we existed. And now there's a few different pieces of legislation that were written with us in mind, mainly primarily the Save Our Stages Act, which there's now an act in working its way through Congress to be included in that, you know, hopefully included in the next stimulus bill, which is specifically for independent venues, independent promoters, and independent talent representatives to help us get through this crisis.
You know, when I read the description of the COVID relief that was proposed in this Save Our Stages Act, it was the first glimmer of hope for me as somebody who's running an organization like this, because it really seemed to understand what we're going through and how long we're going to have to endure this. I'm looking at the gridlock in Congress and the lack of motion in terms of these relief bills. What is your take on what's going to happen next and related to that?
There's a lot of fighting about what that stimulus should look like. Obviously, it's an election year, and, you know, it's the only thing that's going to happen legislatively for the rest of the year if it happens. And so I don't think anyone has a good idea of if that happens. But we feel very confident that if a bill happens, we're going to be included in it at this point. You know, small business relief is basically the only thing everyone agrees on. All the legislation around us has been bipartisan. The Save Our Stages Act, you know, was written and sponsored by John Cornyn's office out of Texas. He's, you know, probably the number two most influential Republican senator behind McConnell. And Amy Klobuchar obviously ran for president. So it's like, two of the most effective legislators in the Senate are the ones pushing this on both sides. And it really has been a bipartisan issue.
Well, when we heard about NEVA, we joined the same day. And, you know, we have since, you know, included, you know, information in our, our mailings, email that we send to our patrons as well as on our website. But as a venue, as a live music presenter, what else can we do?
The reason we're so at the table is the Save Our Stages site and all the letters that fans have written to Congress. We've now sent, I think we've just crossed, we're right around 2 million emails have been sent to Congress. Everyone in Congress knows and they know that this is a grassroots movement that, you know, this isn't AstroTurf, this isn't the NRA or, you know, Greenpeace or something that has these, like, we didn't exist six months ago and 2 million people have told Congress that they care about us. And so that, and that has been entirely grass, we have no marketing budget. We have no, we built this from, from scratch. It's, it's all been based on the venues and the venues, things like what you've done, the email list and, and just how, our coalition is everyone in America. It is truly bipartisan. Everyone loves concerts. It's country fans in Texas and hip hop fans in Chicago and rock and roll fans in New York. Like it's, everybody has been part of it. We've been incredibly organized in all 50, you know, in all 50 states in DC. We've touched every single office with constituents and, you know, but everyone knows the venues in their city. And when the venues that matter to that city, you know, some of our members are over 100 years old, you know, these venues. And so when those venues that have never, you know, we're a group that have never asked for anything from Congress. And so when we're calling and saying we're, we're drowning, you know, hearing those calls from people that they've never heard from before has been really moving. So, you know, every little action, however small, matters. And that's what we've been able to do is just engage in a very positive way.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, I am so grateful that you guys are rooting for us. And I want you to know that we're rooting for you. Let's get attention for this thing. Let's get attention for T-CAN and keep the live music going.
Yeah, we're just pulling for each other and it's, it's, one of the fun things right now is, or neat things is because no one's doing shows, it's everyone's working with their competitors. I get to see it in all these different markets where, you know, people who are in the same cities who have competed with each other for years are working together on something for the first time. They're not fighting about which club does this artist play? It's like none of us are putting on shows right now.
Yeah, this is a, a great industry to be a part of for sure. Well, thank you so much for doing this interview. I appreciate you taking the time and joining with us tonight. Good luck to you out there in Phoenix, Arizona.
Thank you and good luck to you out there in Boston.
Okay, good enough, man. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got time for just a few questions that people have sent in from our members and our patrons. So let's get to that. So first off is the question I hear most often on the street and wherever I go and we get an email to us almost every day, which is, when are we going to be able to host lives, live performances once again? And I wish I knew. The answer to that question really is tied to a number of things. Primarily, you know, when are we going to have a vaccine available? When are, when are audiences going to feel comfortable and safe and secure coming to a, a venue for a live performance again? It's also tied to what our capacity restrictions are going to be. If, if T-CAN is limited to, you know, only a fraction of our usual seating capacity, which is usually 280 seats. So if we're able to present 25 people in the venue, most of the performances and most of the artists that we, we book here are, are probably not going to be financially viable for us to, to have the performance. So that, that's going to force us to reschedule the performance further out. If we have expanded capacity, perhaps sooner. But, you know, it's not entirely up to us. It's up to the state. It's up to the artists and when they feel comfortable touring again. And it's going to be up to our audiences. We did a, we did a, a survey of you and the, the answers were not terribly surprising, but there's, there are many of you who are extremely excited to go out to performances as soon as they possibly can. But there are a number of folks who feel very cautious about coming back out. So we're going to do the right thing. We're, we don't want to create a situation where we have to open for performances, but then close back up again or cause any, any kind of issue in the community as far as spreading infection. So we are going to keep you posted, but at this point, it looks like it could be an extended period of time before we can present live music once again. In, in, in that light, the second set of questions usually is, when we do reopen, what will be our capacity? What will be the restrictions that we have in place? Will social distancing and, and mask wearing be in place and a requirement for, for attending concerts? And I guess the answer to, to all of those questions is that certainly we're, we're not going to reopen in any condition where people have to be worried during a performance whether or not they're going to be, get sick as a result of attending a performance. We don't want anybody to have to forego attending a performance that they purchased tickets for because they're too worried about it to, to be able to enjoy the show. So I think at the time that it is possible to reopen, we'll be revisiting all those decisions. Certainly as it applies to movies, we, we have a very well thought-through plan to, to, to have people enjoy films with every precaution that has been required and recommended by the health authorities in the state. So those screenings are being held for very small audiences. And I think that the, the seating is very spread apart. There's generally much more than six feet distance between any folks. We do require mask wearing, but we do allow you to take that off to enjoy popcorn or drink if, if you pick that up on the way in. So if you do have tickets for a show in the fall or you have tickets for a film, you can check our website and there are instructions there on what the precautions are that'll prepare you for that event. Okay? Another question we are, are, are asked is what can we do to help? And it's just like you, our members to, to want to know what you can do to get involved because no one wants to see T-CAN disappear after the millions of dollars that have been put into it as well as the hundreds of thousands of volunteer hours that, that people have put into it. So I certainly don't want to see it disappear. So if you do want to get involved, we, we have a page on our website, where we have a number of things that you can do to get involved. The easiest one is renew your membership. If you're not a member, become a member. That, that makes a tremendous difference. You can make a gift to the annual fund. You could convert your tickets to a donation if you choose. But that complete list is on our website and we invite you to take a look at that if you, if you want to do some more. You know, the, thinking about the discussion we had with Stephen Chilton and the NEVA organization tonight. If you are so inclined, you could also reach out to your local representatives and state senators to encourage them to support the Save Our Stages Act and the Restart Act. This legislation will, will provide, you know, in, in many cases, six months of funding for organizations just like T-CAN who are suffering across the country and will likely be among the last organizations to, to be able to open. So get involved with that campaign. And if you Google Save Our Stages, you'll find a lot of information on that. So that's it. Once again, I, I want to thank our guests for tonight. Steph Paines of Les Zeppelin, thank you. Stephen Chilton of NEVA, also Erin Vassil and Nicola Anderson. Thanks so much for participating. I also want to thank Beth Chambers and Jim Fliss of Clever Mountain Media. They're here in Natick. They run this video production company that has been tremendous help to us, not only in producing this kind of communication, but also our, our Live from T-CAN livestream events. So thanks to Beth and Jim as well. We hope to see you soon. Thanks. Take care.